I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. And we are going to start this evening by reorganizing the board. This is our first meeting following the annual town elections. And so I am going to start by taking a nomination for Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Samia for Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Samia, if we vote on this, are you willing to accept the nomination and be Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'm gonna sit here just for now. Or do you want me to turn it over to you?
I can.
However you want to do it. Do you want to move now or?
No, why don't we finish this?
I'll finish it out and then we'll move. Okay. So the next thing we need is a nomination for Vice Chair. And I do have a memo from Teresa Flynn. She's unable to be here with us this evening because it's awards night at Shrewsbury High School and her daughter's a senior and is receiving an award. But she did express an interest in being nominated for Vice Chair. So I'm gonna go ahead and nominate Teresa Flynn for Vice Chair. Second. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we were going to need someone to be Clerk for the year.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Conlon to be the Clerk.
Second.
And would you accept that nomination?
I would.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we can play musical chairs. Just give us a second to reorganize and then we will be off and running.
Thank you.
Do you want your pen? Oh, I forgot my name tag.
It's okay, it's coming your way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Next item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to approve the minutes of April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four roundtable, and May second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports. Members, any announcements at all? I have a few. First thing, I want to thank Mrs. Conlon and Mrs. Cassavant for holding office hours today and a reminder to the public that on the first Tuesday of every month, we hold office hours right outside of the Selectmen's Room, usually in conference room A, from five-thirty to six-thirty. All from the public are welcome to talk about any issues that they'd like and would welcome an opportunity to speak with you. Also, I want to congratulate Mrs. Flynn on her reelection and all those at the other offices that also sought reelection. And we're victorious together with all those who also are willing to run for town meeting and we can't do this without all of those who give of their time for our community. So that is great news, so congratulations to all of them. I also want to recognize Beth for her outstanding services. Chair, it's a lot of work, as you know, and you did a really nice job and appreciate all your efforts, so thank you for that. And then several other announcements, just bear with me momentarily. The annual town meeting begins next Monday, Monday, May twentieth, at seven P. M. at Oak Middle School in the auditorium. It is anticipated that the annual town meeting may last beyond one evening and the continued dates will be Tuesday, May twenty-first, and Wednesday, May twenty-second, at the same time and place. Next item, the town meeting occurred on Tuesday, May seventh. Well, this is actually what I said, but this is also thank you to the Town Clerk's Office and all the volunteers involved in administering the election process. For newly-elected town meeting members, you are encouraged to attend the pre-town meeting where moderator Jim Kane will give a preview of the annual town meeting. This is scheduled for this Thursday, May sixteenth, at seven P. M. at the Oak Middle School Auditorium. Next item, Mr. Mizikar and the Town staff have filmed a video summarizing each article on the annual town meeting warrant, which can be viewed online on the Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube channel. It's about fifty-two minutes long, but it's a really nice overview of the articles that will be before town meeting on Monday. The Select Board is seeking applicants for vacancies on the Shrewsbury Development Corporation Board of Directors Sustainability Committee and a high school representative for the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee. If you are interested, please apply to the town website by the deadline, which is this Friday, May seventeenth. And finally, there are also seats in the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees, Community Preservation Committee, Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee, the Historic District Commission, and the Retirement Board, with terms expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. A general call of interest for these positions has been issued on the town website. If you are interested, please apply on the town website by the deadline, which is Friday, June seventh. That's all I have for announcements here. I'll turn it over now to the town manager for town manager's report.
Good evening, Board members. I do have a couple announcements for you this evening. I want to draw the public's attention to a public hearing on the comprehensive improvements to Route Twenty corridor. That meeting, which is a public hearing of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, will occur at seven P. M. on Thursday, May twenty-third. It is a virtual meeting and residents can find the link to that meeting either from the town of Shrewsbury's website or the Mass DOT website. And the easiest way from either of those websites to find the information about the hearing is to just search in the search bar, Shrewsbury Route Twenty Corridor Improvements. And that will be brought up and we'll be doing a couple announcements in advance to that so residents know that they have the opportunity to provide comments on the twenty-five percent design that is currently in Mass DOT's hands. I also wanted to provide a public notice that Spectrum or Charter Cable has applied for a franchise license for cable operations within the town and the Select Board will hold a public hearing at their next meeting on May twenty-eighth. At that meeting, residents will be able to hear a presentation from Charter about why they should be allowed to operate a cable franchise within the community and also ask questions through the public hearing process. And finally, I'm just pleased to let the Board and members of the public know that Ryan Pont Brant, Pont Brant, who is the foreman within the Cemetery Department, has passed his Certified Playground Safety Inspector's exam. This is certainly not an easy exam to pass the first time. It needs to be, it needs to be recertified every three years. Just to provide an overview, there are three, two full days of information-filled training that take place prior to the exam. And we're just really proud of receiving this, Ryan receiving this and being able to contribute his certification as we continue to improve our playground conditions across the community. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Pursuing the Select Board Policy Thirty-One, it's to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during our Select Board meetings. Tonight, no one has expressed a desire to speak in front of us this evening. However, going forward, if you'd like to talk at a regularly-scheduled meeting, please reach out to the Chair of the Board through the Select Board's Office by noon of Monday the day before a meeting by written correspondence or email at selectmen@shrewsburymath.gov. Next item on the agenda is under Meetings and Hearings. It's a seven-oh-five public hearing to review an act on the application of John Care, Pearl Two LLC DBA, Premier Auto Repair, four thirty-one, four thirty-three, Boston Turnpike for Class Two and Garage licenses. Is there someone here? Is there a care? Can I invite you to come up to the desk if you could introduce yourself, even though I introduced you, but thank you for coming this evening.
Absolutely. My name is John Care, obviously owner of that LLC.
So you'll, a question for you. So you're purchasing an existing car dealer and repair shop at four thirty-one, four thirty-three Boston Turnpike, which become Premier Auto Repair. Is there gonna be a change from the business at all or is it pretty much status quo going forward?
There'll be internal changes to the business. Our plan is to clean up the property significantly. I submitted pictures to both you and the zoning board of our current operation in Worcester. So overall, business will stay the same, focused ninety-five percent on auto repair. I consider our shop and our business to be one of the cleanest in the area. We've been nationally recognized for the service that we do. We do a lot of community outreach as well. So our plan is to clean up the property and then obviously operate under a different name once we get up and running.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions before we open up the public hearing? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this matter, welcome to do so. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously. What's the pleasure of the Board at this point?
I move the Board approve the Class Two and Garage licenses application of John Care, Pearl Two LLC, doing business as Premier Auto Repair, subject to approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously. What's the pleasure of the Board at this point?
I move the Board approve the Class Two and Garage licenses application of John Care, Pearl Two LLC, doing business as Premier Auto Repair, subject to approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously. What's the pleasure of the Board at this point?
I move the Board approve the Class Two and Garage licenses application of John Care, Pearl Two LLC, doing business as Premier Auto Repair, subject to approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Shrewsbury.
We are past seven-ten, so next item on the agenda is also a public hearing, review and act on the application of Parth Patel, Shrewsbury Burritos LLC, doing business as Mo's Southwest Grill, sixteen North Quinseyman Avenue, for a common victular license. Can I introduce, invite you up here? Good evening. Thanks for coming in. If you could just introduce yourself.
So, yeah, we took over this business in two thousand and twenty-one in July and after we have our most like franchisee upgradement and our lease was expired last year, August, I tried to with my owner to renew the lease and we do the like month-to-month and we just renew the lease in April. So I got the code for the lift and I have a working on with my general contractor to upgrade my, with the new most franchisee standard-wise. So it's gonna be, everything gonna be update this year with the colors and with the furniture and everything is gonna be new with the most franchisee standard-wise. So that's why we take some time to upgrade for the lift.
Okay, thank you. And what's being, the hearing's about for a common victular license for Mo's Southwest Grill at sixteen North Quinseyman Avenue. For many years, Mo's did have a common victular license, however, it was not renewed at the end of two thousand and twenty-three due to the business not having an operable stairlift, which was what you're talking about now and not being compliant with accessibility standards. However, the business owner, you applied for and was granted a variance from the Architectural Access Board, long as the stairlift is repaired by twelve-thirty, one-twenty-four and adhered to a certain conditions, then we can move forward with approving the common victular license. So any questions from the Board before, this is also a public hearing, opening up to the public? Any comments or questions?
I'm just curious, you know, if you do anticipate that stairlift being repaired in the timeframe laid out?
Yeah, definitely, because it's a, like, we are also upgrading with the colors and landscaping and outside, like, most of the upgrade things going this year, we gonna wait for the summer and general contractor come and give us a code for everything. And we already get the code for the lift, so we just wait for the lease renewal, because without any lease, we can't do anything. That's the problem.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cassavant?
What is your plan for people who have accessibility issues to access your business?
So we open the other side door too. Every time we repair the door, we got the email, we repair the door, it's open all the time. And people who wants to access the bathroom, we have the like other side, they can enter it, but yeah, they can order the food the front side.
Okay. So just using the back door?
Yeah, and we use, we put the sign on it, front door, that like we don't have a area to you can access other side, but yeah, that's the, we have it right now and we, we talked with the lift guy and they gonna be say like, it's gonna be, because it's a twenty-year-old lift, so we trying to get the whole new lift for the coming years. It's because repairable is gonna be more cost than getting new lift.
Okay. Any other questions? You talked about colors and like, Mo's was, and I hope this is for you as well, that it was booming for a long period of time and...
Yeah, so definitely. So we changed like all the color themes and logos and everything, so it's gonna be in this, between the six-month period.
Great.
We gonna do it that things.
Great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this? Not seeing any. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I move the Board approve the common victulars license, application of Parth Patel, Shrewsbury Burritos LLC, doing business as Mo's Southwest Grill.
Second.
I'm moving second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck. Yeah, good pass. You're all good. Thank you very much for coming this evening and best wishes.
Thank you so much.
It's not a public hearing, so if we have questions, is it Kelly Paquette?
So it is a Chris Barasino.
Okay. Barasino? Okay. Thank you. So next item on the agenda is under New Business. It's a review act on, an act on the Sunday Entertainment License Application from Kelly Paquette, Milton Rents, Inc., fourteen Fortune Boulevard, for a classic car show on Sunday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine A. M. to two P. M. This item requests the Board, requires the Board approval of a Sunday Entertainment License Application. Because the event falls on a Sunday, it is subject to the Blue Laws and requires local approval by the Select Board and state approval by the Department of Public Safety. So I believe that we have Chris Barasino from Milton Rents here, online, if anyone has any questions for him at all. This is the first-time event for them, that's why they're here as well, so is he on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
So if you could just talk a little bit about the activity, it's great, following on a Sunday classic car show, what you expect the event to be like?
Sure. It's, we, we're Milton Rents. We are a, the rental services division of Milton Caterpillar and we have a facility in Shrewsbury. We're doing a charity car show from nine A. M. to two P. M. on Sunday, August eighteenth. It's our first one. You know, if two hundred people show up, that would be a gigantic success. So we're hoping the weather cooperates and we can donate lots of money to charity.
Thank you. The, the application has been reviewed by Deputy Fire Chief Seth Colby and Police Chief Kevin Anderson. Overall, they expressed no concerns, but emphasize an access way to the building is maintained during the event. Colleagues, any questions? No? Not seeing any? What's the pleasure of the Board?
I move the Board approve the Sunday Entertainment License Application from Kelly Paquette, Milton Rentals Incorporated, fourteen Fortune Boulevard, for a classic car show on Sunday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine A. M. to two P. M.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck with that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the May twentieth, twenty-four Annual Town Meeting Warrant Recommendations. Mo has been prepared by Mr. Mizikar suggesting that we bundle the warrant articles in a total of seventeen different bundles. What we'll do is go through the warrant articles, a lot of those we've talked about. A couple of the warrant articles may require additional conversation, but we'll go through them. For the fifty-four warrant articles, we'll recommend a couple be held, while we expect balances to be zero. Just take the action immediately before town meeting to make sure. We'll talk about that. We have also a couple of warrant articles that since the recommending bodies have come up with a recommendation or not to recommend, we'll talk about those as well as we get through it. And the one warrant article we really haven't talked about as Board relates to the citizens' petition for the zoning, the commercial business versus limited industrial, and we'll talk about that. We've had the presentation for the petitioners. I know at the Finance Committee on April eleventh, there was a hearing, but as a Board, we haven't had an in-depth conversation. We've talked about it, but there's an opportunity, if there are any issues or concerns that want to be discussed during this as well, that's a chance to do it. So if it makes sense, does everyone see the memo and we'll go through those, I'll read through what the warrant article, we can, if anyone has any issue with any of the bundles and want to take any of the warrant articles individually, we can do that first. Makes sense? Okay. So the first bundle, Articles One through Three. Article One is to receive reports of town officers committees. Article Two, funding of the three-hundredth Celebration Committee, which provides ten thousand dollars of seed capital, if I recall correctly. And Article Three, appointment of members of the Wright and Harlow Trust. Any of those warrant articles we want to take out of turn? Are we comfortable making our recommendations? Okay. What's the pleasure of the Board for Bundle One?
I move we recommend passage of Articles One to Three. Bundle One.
Second.
Second. I've been moving second and all those in favor to recommend, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is Bundle Two, Article Four. This relates to payment of prior-year bills, is in the town meeting book and also, as nicely stated in the pre-town meeting recording, both, as I just mentioned, Articles Four and Five, while we expect there to be no activity needed under these warrant articles, at the same time, prudence would dictate that we wait until immediately before town meeting. We'll post that and we'll take those activities under Article Four and Article Five right before town meeting. So Bundle Two, Article Four, any discussion at all? If none, take a motion?
I move we hold recommendation to town meeting.
Second. I've been moving second and to motion to hold recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes unanimously. Next one's Bundle Three, Article Five. Similar, this relates to fiscal twenty-four operating budget adjustments. Is there a motion?
I move we hold recommendation to, on Bundle Three, Article Five, to town meeting.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes unanimously. Next one's Bundle Three, Article Five. Similar, this relates to fiscal twenty-four operating budget adjustments. Is there a motion?
I move we hold recommendation to, on Bundle Three, Article Five, to town meeting.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle, Articles Six through Twenty-eight. I'll go through them really quickly and then we can have a discussion if any members would like to take any of those out from that bundle. Article Three is the fund override stabilization account, Article Six, excuse me. Article Six is that. Article Seven is the fiscal twenty-five operating budget general fund. Article Eight is the offset levy cable TV pay in lieu of taxes. Article Nine is offset levy light department, the pay in lieu of taxes. Article Ten is offset levy free cash. Article Eleven is fiscal twenty-five operating budget solid waste enterprise. Article Twelve is fiscal twenty-five operating budget sewer special reserve fund. Article Thirteen is fiscal twenty-five operating budget water enterprise. Article Twenty-four is fiscal twenty-five operating budget stormwater enterprise. And Article Twenty-five, Article Fifteen is fiscal twenty-five operating budget peg enterprise. Article Sixteen is to fund out-of-pocket medical costs of retired disabled police officers and firefighters. Article Seventeen is to fund insurance trust account. Article Eighteen is fund general stabilization account. Article Nineteen is fund sewer stabilization account. Article Twenty is to set spending, annual spending limits for the revolving accounts. Article Twenty-One is to accept Chapter Ninety funds for roadway improvements. Article Twenty-Two is to transfer funds sale of cemetery lots. Article Twenty-Three is funding for lakes, ponds, and waterways. Article Twenty-Four is to fund youth and family counseling services. Article Twenty-Five is Capital Improvements Plan General Fund. Article Twenty-Six is Capital Improvement Plan Sewer Article Closeouts. Article Twenty-Seven is Capital Improvement Plan Stormwater. Article Twenty-Eight is Capital Improvement Plan Water Article Closeout. So do members, are we comfortable voting this as a bundle or would anyone like to take any of these warrant articles out to discuss separately? Okay? I don't see, I see we're comfortable. Can I get a motion for Bundle Four, please?
I recommend passage of Bundle Four for Articles Six through Twenty-eight.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor of recommending passage of Articles Six through Twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next bundle is Bundle Five, Articles Twenty-nine through Thirty-one. Article Twenty-nine is to authorize Oak Street Water Storage Tank Maintenance Plan. It's a fifteen-year maintenance plan. Article Thirty is to fund expansion of cemetery, revise existing funding. And Article Thirty-One, transfer funds to the opioid special revenue fund. Any, those warrant articles we want to take out and speak separately? If not, I'll entertain a motion with respect to Articles Twenty-nine through Thirty-one.
I move we recommend passage of Articles Twenty-nine through Thirty-one.
Second.
I've been moving second and all those in favor of recommending passage of Articles Twenty-nine through Thirty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So Article Thirty-two under Bundle Six, this is the article I alluded to earlier, we did receive at our April twenty-third meeting, if I recall, a presentation from the petitioners of this article. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. So the petitioners came at April twenty-third and presented some, an overview of their warrant article. There was also a discussion separately, but in front of the Finance Committee during their warrant article presentation at April eleventh hearing. But what we haven't had, other than that, is an opportunity to discuss in any manner or give our opinions on this, if we would like to, and I'd ask Mr. Mizikar just to give a brief overview, if he could, of this warrant article.
Sure. So this warrant article is a citizens' petition that's been duly submitted and the overview is provided by the lead petitioners. In summary, it seeks to change the light industrial district in the northwest quadrant of the community, in the area of Worcester Sand and Stone, to commercial business. Essentially, this article would restore zoning that was in place prior to the August eighth, two thousand and twenty, annual town meeting, when the zoning was most recently changed. Board members, I did want to advise the Board that I've been made aware of the filing with the Planning Board for a preliminary subdivision. This is provided under Mass General laws, Chapter Forty-A, Section Six. And with such a filing for a preliminary subdivision, the applicant is afforded a seven-month period where they have rights to utilize the existing zoning at the time of their filing. So it's my understanding, at this point in time, that with that filing, there is likely some preservation of the existing owning, existing zoning that's, that's currently in place. Certainly, that wouldn't preclude town media from taking action on this and voting on it. It may, the, the current owner of the property in question would seemingly retain rights to develop with the existing zoning that's in place. So I did want to advise that. I was just made aware of that filing, so I wanted to make sure the Board was aware of that prior to your discussion this evening.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for this warrant article?
So just a couple of questions. We just got the subdivision filing information, right? So I'm still just trying to process what that means exactly, because I think that the intent of this petition article is to change the zoning back to what it was before in an effort to prevent this project from moving forward. Is what you're saying that if town meeting were to vote favorably for this article, it would not prevent the project from moving forward?
That's my understanding right now. I need to do a little bit additional consultation with town council, just because we learned of this, but that is my understanding of how their rights would be preserved with this, this existing zoning. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the best information that I can provide to the Board this evening. There's additional opportunities or, or processes that the current landowner is afforded to... opportunities or processes that the current landowner is afforded to go through to preserve the rights to the existing zoning for a longer duration than seven months, but they have to take other actions within that seven months. And according to my review of the general law, they could preserve that zoning for up to eight years, seven to eight years.
Okay. Is that because there could be litigation, and then they would need to then, you're not really?
I'm not exactly sure the why. I believe that the, yeah, I'm not exactly sure why.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the rationale, partially grandfathering, you know, to, but for the eight years versus the seven months is an odd number, but.
Right. And again, like, this is, you know, this project is before the planning board, and so our board has had very limited engagement with the details. Obviously, we're all following the planning board process, because that's just what we do. But at the same time, this isn't something that we have had a direct vote for, or in any way influenced, you know, the direction of the project. You know, I understand completely, you know, having listened to the many residents who have come forward to speak, you know, about the project, who've engaged in the planning board process and in the conservation process. You know, we just had someone at office hours this evening. I understand the desire to, you know, find a way to lessen the impact on neighborhoods. I am not convinced that by changing the zoning back to what it was before, that it's going to achieve the intended goal. My other concern is just that town meeting voted twice, right? Once in August of 2020 to change the zoning, and then a second time when we, I said we, but town meeting, right, voted to allow for a greater height of a warehouse building in that zone. You know, understanding that, of course, I don't know that anyone envisioned, you know, something of this size. I understand that that is something that, you know, people are saying, in hindsight, had you known that there was going to be, you know, such a large development, would you still have voted for it? You know, I think that that's hypothetical. I think what's before us, though, is precedent, and, you know, whether or not, as a community, we trust what town meeting votes, and whether we're kind of setting ourselves up to go back and second guess the vote of town meeting several years down the road, just based on, you know, how the decision plays out. And so for that reason, I am not voting to recommend article 32.
Okay.
This is one, you know, I've struggled with a bit. I hear the concerns of residents, and I, you know, think that some of those concerns are valid with, you know, air pollution and noise and diesel trucks moving through neighborhoods. And, you know, it is, I hear, I hear the concerns. I was town meeting member when this was voted, you know, when we voted in the tent on the lawn of Oak Middle School. And, you know, it's one of the struggles that we have in the, you know, the way the ware world works, that, you know, we don't get to pick the exact project that goes onto private property. We zone, and we, you know, you know, we always imagine like the best and highest use of a parcel. And, you know, a warehouse, is that the best and highest use of a parcel? I don't know. You know, there are arguments on many sides. There are a lot of other things that could go in the space. You know, the company that's putting this proposal forward has been a good partner with us in, you know, protecting our wellheads. And that's my, you know, my initial concerns with this was about our aquifer. That's, you know, my background is in water resources. And, you know, I think that they have been good partners in this. And, you know, if we make these changes here, you don't know what we're going to face in the future. Will there be the next project that comes down the line if this one didn't pass? If the next project that comes down the line, will they be as good of a partner in protecting our water resources? So all that to say, I have struggled with this one, but I, I do not recommend passage of this article.
Thank you. So I will not be redundant over many of the points that you made, but the process, there are a few things. As Beth had talked about, there was an open and deliberative process back in 2020, starting with March, when GFI had sent a letter to the select board, and there were meetings in March or April of that year. There were hearings in front of finance committee and the planning board. There was a letter sent in July of 2020 as well to all town meeting members about what this Warren article would do. The Warren article passed overwhelmingly at town meeting, while not unanimous. It went for about 10, 12 minutes, and it was passed close to unanimous. And then in 2022, to raise the roof, the height, so it would be Class A manufacturing space, it's pretty clear it's going to be warehouse space. I know that's one of the questions about whether or not this was a purpose that people understood. And there was another opportunity to have, in the same amount of hearings, discussion, and there wasn't a lot of pushback on that. So I think the process we have to trust in terms of where we landed with it. I do completely understand the concerns with the aquifer, with the residents and that. But it's also a balance that I think there'd be real implications for our community if we set forth on one path with developers, as we're trying to grow our commercial tax base, to try to reduce the burden on residents, that we're going to create that uncertainty for commercial developers as they start down a process, invest dollars, and then possibly have the project that they've invested in pulled back after going through all the process steps that they were told that they needed to pass through. So in this case, you know, April 11th, finance committee was a very good conversation. Planning board, there've been a lot of conversations. Members of our board have a lot, have had conversations with community members. But in this instance, together with going to the aquifer, with regulations in place as well to protect against that, the overlay district, as well as Mass DEP and the regulations that are there as well, I think the procedural safeguards are in place as much as they can be, and will be, that this is the overlay district that's been there even with the current use as well. So similar to both of you, I also vote not to recommend this. And we all understand traffic and noise, and those will go through the process. But while we understand residents' concerns, in this instance, I think this is important and also recommend, or would not recommend passage of article 32. So we've all had an opportunity to speak. At this point, pretty clear where we are. If I could get a motion with respect to bundle six, article two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Just for some clarity on here, do I make a motion to not recommend?
Correct. Sorry. Yes.
All right. I move that we do not recommend bundle six, article 32. Second.
Been moved in second, and all those voting not to recommend article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously not to recommend article 32. Can you get Mr. Garcia back? Next, bundle seven, article 33, fiscal 2025 CPA funding transfer and reserves, basically the statutory allocations that are required. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, excuse me, I move we recommend passage of article 33.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to recommend passage of article 33 passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is bundle eight, article 34. Article 34 CPA Project One, Affordable Housing, $7,000. It was a feasibility study for housing at 11 Elizabeth Street. However, substitute funding had been procured through the Affordable Housing Trust, and the recommendation since then from the CPA C is to recommend defeat. But in front of us as well is a similar article that the purpose has been frustrated. So there's not the need to have the Warren article for the 7,000. Now, the funding has been received elsewhere. So assuming there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion for bundle eight, article 34.
I move we recommend defeat of article 34.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor recommending defeat of article 34, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle is bundle nine, articles 35 through 39. Article 35 is CPA Project Two. It's open space and recreation for permanent story walk at Lake Street Park for $13,450. Article 36 is CPA Project Three, Historic Resources, $205,000 for Mountain View Cemetery Historic Gravestone Preservation and Restoration Phase Two. Article 37 is CPA Project Four, Outdoor Recreation, $100,000 for Camp One Again Parking Lot. Article 38, CPA Project Five, Outdoor Recreation, $4,157, wheelchair accessible trail at Camp One Again. And article 39, CPA Project Six, Historic Resources, $5,000, District Five Schoolhouse ADA Feasibility Phase Two. Would anyone like to take any of those articles separately?
May I make one comment to the board? So article 36, just because this is a little bit different than how the rest of the articles outside of CPA are structured. So the article identified $205,000, but the motion itself will be for less than that. It's for $160,000. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
So 160, so, and they'll come back in the fall, correct? The difference, is that what it's?
They may need to, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So we can, assuming that the board's comfortable taking this bundle together, there's no special?
Yep.
Okay. So anyone like to take any of the Warren articles out individually? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recommend passage of articles 35 to 39.
I recommend, I move that we recommend passage of bundle nine, articles 35 through 39.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor of recommending passage of articles 35 through 39, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle is bundle 10, articles 40 and 41. Article 40 is to authorize grant of easement on town land, portion of 20 Centec Boulevard. And article 41, acceptance of public ways, Purinton Street. Anyone like to take either of these articles out separately? Not seeing any. If I can entertain a motion for this?
I move we recommend passage of articles 40 through 41.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor of recommending passage of articles 40 to 41, say aye.
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 None opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle 11 is articles 42 and 43. Article 42 is to amend zoning bylaw, section 7E, digital signage regulations. And article 43, amend zoning bylaw, section two, definitions, farmer's market. Do you want to take these Warren articles out individually? If not, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
I move to recommend passage of articles 42 and 43.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor of recommending passage of articles 42 and 43, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle is bundle 12, article 44. Article 44 is amend zoning bylaw, various sections, also known as the MBTA zoning, transit-oriented development overlay. On May 2nd, our board met on camera on Thursday and deliberated and elected or voted not to recommend this Warren article at the May town meeting, to summarize, largely give an opportunity for additional information to be out there, and take this matter up at a special town meeting in the fall. Encourage anyone to watch that meeting, which is on YouTube through the Shrewsbury Media Connection. But the gist of it is, a lot of questions out there. We want to provide residents with opportunity to ask questions, gather information, come to our office hours on the first Tuesday of every month, an opportunity to learn more information about this and the thoughtful work that was done in putting together the proposed 173-acre zoning area that would be compliant with this law. Anything else we want to say at this? We've already taken action. Anyone want to comment?
I mean, I would just say that I still stand by complying, you know, for the town of Shrewsbury. I think that's in our best interest. However, you know, as I said at the May 2nd meeting, willing to take the time to go through that pre-adoption process, make sure that we have the best information possible for all of our citizens to, you know, feel comfortable with the proposal that's being brought forth, and make sure that our town meeting members, especially those that are newly elected as of last week, feel like they have all the information that they need to make an informed decision on behalf of the community when it comes time to vote.
Agreed. Any other comments at all? And the other thing, too, is that through the regular communications with town meeting members through Taylor Galusha and the town manager's office to provide information as we receive it, opportunity to digest it, ask questions, understand what it means. I know the Supreme Judicial Court has been, has a hearing set for October to hear about Milton. They originally complied with their town meeting, and then there was a referendum after the fact on Valentine's Day, if I recall correctly, with a repeal. And February 27th, the AG's office filed a complaint with the Supreme Judicial Court. In ideal world, that hearing would be held a lot earlier than October, but let's see what additional information we learn from now until when we have a special town meeting in the fall. Given this, I don't think any action needs to be taken, given that we've already voted not to recommend article 44 at town meeting. Next bundle 13, article 45, amending zoning bylaw, section seven, senior housing overlay district. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we recommend passage of article 45.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle 14, articles 46 through 51, all zoning-related matters. Article 46, amending zoning bylaw, definitions, adding the definition of brewpub. Article 47 is amending section 7M, Lakeway Overlay District, nano brewery and brewpub by right, micro brewery by special permit. Article 48, another amendment to zoning bylaw, section 7N, Route 20 Overlay District, similarly to the previous article, nano brewery and brewpub by right, micro brewery by special permit. Article 49 is to amend zoning bylaw, section 7O, Edgemere Village Overlay District, brewpub by right, nano brewery by special permit. Article 15, amend zoning map, campus overlay district expansion at 333 South Street. Finally, article 51, amend zoning bylaw, article 7C, date change from article 7, oh gosh, August 2nd, 1967, to May 18th, 1955, became apparent that the effective date, actually, this reflects the effective date of the zoning, and hence the date change. Any questions, comments, desire to take any of these Warren articles out separately? Now I'll entertain a motion with respect to bundle 14.
I move that we recommend a passage of bundle 14, articles 46 through 51.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor of recommending passage of articles 46 through 51, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next bundle is bundle 15, article 52. Article 52 is to amend the general bylaw, construction of utility poles and overhead wires bylaw. Any questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
I move we recommend passage of article 52.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor of recommending passage of article 52, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Bundle 16, article 53. The retirement board actually has since recommended defeat of this Warren article. So in front of us, article 53 is to adjust the annual cost of living adjustment for pension system. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that we recommend defeat of article 53.
Second.
All those in favor of recommending defeat of article 53 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And finally, bundle 17, article 54, to amend general bylaw, article 25, donation been set back, and these are amendments to really put the bylaw in line with what the original intent was. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend passage of article 54.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor of recommending passage of article 54, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us through number 10 under new business. Anything else, Mr. Mizikar, as we have everything that we need? Under 10?
That's all we need for 10.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the bundling suggestions. The next one is under Okay, thank you. Thank you for the bundling suggestions. The next one is under eleven. We review an act to appoint three members of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. And we had established at our most recent meeting, April twenty-third, the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee, the charge of which is as follows, is it's established to oversee the repair, renovation, expansion, and a replacement of the buildings located at two oh five, two eleven South Street, and the repair and renovation of the town hall located at a hundred Maple Avenue. And then including the powers incidental thereto in the paragraph, and the deliverable, or at least initially, is the committee shall recommend a preferred design, concept, and budget to the select board no later than September tenth, twenty twenty-four. We had four applicants to, for this position, for these positions, for three positions. And the way that we do this, and Beth, you explain this a lot as Chair, sensitive to wanting those and constantly encouraging those and appreciate those who apply, but at the same time, wanted to make sure that we get ballots. And the way we do this is that Justin passes to each one of us individually a rating system, a point system, not a rating system, depending on who we have with an order. And then the top three applicants with total points are the ones that would be brought forth. None of us get those results. I literally received those results right before this meeting, but none of us get the results until right before the meeting. So I guess a question, if we've read all the people that have applied in the past, have we just gone forward with those?
I usually read it because it's on the agenda.
Okay, so the four who applied, and then Stephen Walsh of thirty-two North Street, Patrick Pitney of one thirty-seven Floral Street, Samuel Mackin of sixteen N F two Drive, and Mike Liberty of ten Stone Land Roadway. Again, we appreciate everyone for applying, all impressive resumes and professional experience, and all would make good additions. However, we did have to make difficult choices. And the top three, based on everyone's feedback, would be, or are, Stephen Walsh, Patrick Pitney, and Mike Liberty. So if there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion with respect to the appointment of those three to serve on the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee.
I move the board appoint Stephen Walsh, Patrick Pitney, and Mike Liberty to serve on the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Again, thank you to all those who applied. There were a lot of other opportunities as well that we had talked about during announcements. And please, please continue to be willing to serve in other capacities. We could use your assistance. Next item is to review an act to appoint a delegate from our board to the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I am interested in serving on this committee and hope that my fellow board members would support that. Haven't had an opportunity yet to serve on a building committee, with the exception of some cake. My last meeting of the Beal Building Committee that I took over for Mr. Kane because he had left the board.
Yeah, getting cake, I guess, doesn't constitute being on a
Not really.
Building committee. I think you'd do a nice job. You have the history of working on other building committee campaigns and operational experience in your role here. Anyone else who would like to apply?
I had been interested, but I absolutely support Ms. Cassavan in serving as our delegate on the board.
Great, thank you. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Beth Cassavan as delegate from the Select Board to the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is number thirteen, To Review an Act on a Proclamation Request from Taylor Galusha, Assistant to Town Manager, Communications Coordinator, and Nick Repetka, Highway Division's Manager, in Recognition of National Public Works Week. This is a request made by them in recognition of the National Public Works Week. It's May nineteenth to May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and recognizes the dedication and hard work of public works professionals who often do the behind the things, behind the scenes work to keep our community safe and operating smoothly. Can I get a motion?
I move the board approve of the proclamation request as presented in recognition of National Public Works Week.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to say I'm very glad that we're presenting this proclamation. I grew up in a blue collar family with a dad that worked for utilities, and I really appreciate the work that our public works employees do in town. Nobody ever wants to worry about, can I get down my road, or what happens when I turn the water on, or what happens when I flush the toilet? And fortunately, because of the hard work and dedication of our staff, most of us don't ever have to worry about that. So, thank you.
Great. No, I agree. We have a, we have a great staff. I mean, we have a professional organization where everyone takes pride in what they do. Saw a lot of that in the strategic plan and the feedback and input from all stakeholders. And, you know, we have a growing town with, it's very complex, but they unravel a lot of that complexity and get things done and get them done really well. So I agree, and thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll go to the next item. Fourteen is to review an act to authorize the town manager to sign amendments to the intermunicipal agreements for participation in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition with each member community. The, this item requests the board's authorization for the town manager to sign amendments to the intermunicipal agreements for participation in the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition. The C M R S W C was formed in twenty twelve with a regional partnership among thirteen towns, and the C M R S C provides technical and management resources to its members for meeting stormwater requirements, creates standard operating procedures, and shares equipment, host training, workshops, et cetera. Now, my understanding for this amendment is that while the town of Spencer has historically provided the fiscal administration for this committee or the coalition, as one of its original founding members, the purpose of this amendment is to replace Spencer with Shrewsbury to take over the fiscal administration, which would require the transfer of four hundred thousand from Spencer to Shrewsbury, and the signing of the M I As between the town of Shrewsbury and all current member communities. And that's what's in front of us?
That's correct.
Do I have it? Any questions or comments? Now I'll entertain a motion with respect to, agenda item fourteen.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign amendments to the intermunicipal agreement for participation in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition with each member community.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item fifteen is to review an act on the road closure request from the Recreation Department for Maple Avenue, Main Street, and Grafton Street for the Memorial Day Parade from eight thirty a.m. to twelve p.m. on Monday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the board approve the road closure request from the Recreation Department for Maple Avenue, Main Street, and Grafton Street for the Memorial Day Parade from eight thirty a.m. to twelve p.m. on Monday, May twenty-seventh.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. There's no other items to discuss. We'll go to correspondence. Item sixteen, we have a letter dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four from the Shrewsbury Trails Committee regarding trail improvements to Lake Street Park. We had two Eagle Scout candidates, a Boy Scout Association Troop one fourteen, Michael O'Toole and David Munch, who, both scouts, they've completed significant projects to approve the Lake Street Park. Michael O'Toole completed a hundred-foot section of Bog Bridge and the Blue Trail, and there was a nice exhibit showing that. And David Munch completed an eighty-foot section of the Bog Bridge over a very swampy area on the green trail that was only accessible in drought or winter within the area, when the area is frozen. So that's very nice projects, and appreciate their service to our community to provide that. So noted. Next item is email dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four from Judy Vedder, fifteen Pheasant Hill Drive, landfill questions. Just questioning, basically a question about the incinerator and whether we receive, where we receive ash from, just what's the status of that? We've just responded to the correspondence from Ms. Vedder?
Yeah, it's fully vetted by staff.
Okay, thank you. Got correspondence here. Next item is correspondence under eighteen. Email dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four from Carrie Shea, Legislative Aid for State Representative Hannah Kane Regarding Chapter Ninety Funding Enactment. On April twenty-fifth, we received the email with said, Housing enacted H forty-five twenty-nine and Act Financing Improvements to Municipal Needs, Municipal Roads and Bridges. This bill provides nine hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars in Chapter Ninety Road and Bridge Funding to Shrewsbury. So noted. Item nineteen is an email dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four from Linda and Robert Heller, one sixteen Sewell Street, regarding one forty-two Clinton Street, and we've responded, looking at the correspondence here.
Yes, I responded.
Thank you very much. On April thirtieth, so, so noted. Number twenty is email dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four from Celia Brown, nineteen Walnut Street, Regarding Proposed Industrial Park. Also responded to that.
I did.
Thank you very much.
From the Cassavan.
Wow, the previous administration, previous administration made it easy. Thank you for that.
You're gonna miss me.
You're right next to us. You're not going far. Item twenty-one is email dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four from State Representative Hannah Kane Regarding State Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-five Budget Update. Lot of information about the state budget in this email. Representative Kane's pleased to share that she successfully advocated for the inclusion of several local initiatives, including fifty thousand for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, ten thousand for accessibility improvements to the bathrooms at Dean Park, and ten thousand for improvements to the gazebo at the Shrewsbury Town Common. There's other information in there, but those are things like she typically does for a town. Brings a lot of good resources for our community, and we appreciate her efforts. So noted. Last is item twenty-two, email dated May third, dated, email dated May third, twenty twenty-four from Robert Ryan, a Colonial Drive query on the twenty nineteen special permit request by G F I.
That one was to planning. We were C C'd, and it was above my pay grade, so I sent it to Town Staff.
Okay, thank you. So noted. So that is it on the agenda. We do need to go into executive session, but before we go into executive session, anything else? Any questions or comments? Great. So I am seeking, sorry, no, no worries. I'm seeking to enter executive session for the following reasons. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and related multi-district litigation relative to PFAS contamination. The board will now consider entering executive session in accordance with the Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy and with respect to litigation in Ray Aquius Film Forming Foam's Products Liability Litigation, and related multi-district litigation relative to PFAS contamination, because the Chair finds that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board. May have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
There's a roll call vote. Left to right here. Michelle?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The board will now enter into executive session and will not reconvene in open session. So that is it for this evening. Thank you for joining us. We will see you on May twenty-eighth. Good night.